Thank you, Kelly.
Good evening. I should welcome everybody here for a special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. This meeting is to have a public hearing regarding our budget, but first if you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Randall?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united. Thank you.
Before I open the public hearing, there's just a couple rules we'd like to go over. Of course, the meeting is open to the public. Members of the public in attendance will be invited to speak one at a time. The chairman may impose a time limit for individuals to comment. That is normally two minutes. Each speaker shall state his or her name and affiliation prior to commencing, and we are going to ask you to come up to the microphone so that the county clerk can hear you clearly as she will in fifteen minutes of the hearing. Those in attendance shall conduct themselves respectfully and avoid interruptions. No outbursts, cheering, or applause. The board is not obligated to respond to comments during the public hearing, and minutes of the meeting will be recorded by the clerk. So with that said, I'd like to have the Park County Clerk's budget message put into the record, please.
Madam Chairman, thank you. My name is Hans Odie. I'm the second deputy. No, I'm the first deputy. That's what I I just demoted myself, I guess. Not on purpose. So I'm the first deputy Park County Clerk. Madam Chairman, Park County Board of Commissioners, we are pleased to present the Park County Fiscal Year Twenty-Six Budget pursuant to Wyoming State Statute Sixteen for One-O-Nine. The budget is comprised of suggestions and requests of elected officials, department heads, boards, organizations, and the public. It is a combined effort with the Board of County Commissioners, staff from the Clerk's office and the Treasurer's office. We would like to thank all those involved for all their help during this budget session. It's the Commissioner's job to ensure that expenditures do not exceed revenue projections. Included in today's budget being presented here are goals and highlights for the Twenty-Sixth include the following. The general fund revenue projection for the coming year is thirty-four point four million dollars. General fund budget request for fiscal year twenty-five, total thirty-seven point six million, which includes special operations such as solid waste, county road construction fund, American recovery funds, opioid settlement, and E nine-one-one. Park County has fourteen point seven million dollars in general fund reserves, six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in mineral property tax revenues, plus the healthcare fund, the county road fund, solid waste, and E nine-one-one reserve account funds. The county will use a net five point two million dollars cash carryover to balance the fiscal year for fiscal year Twenty-Sixth. That cash carryover comes from the fiscal year Twenty-five budget. The county's overall tax revenue from the assessed valuation decreased from twelve point nine million for fiscal Twenty-five to ten point two million for fiscal Twenty-Sixth, a decrease of almost two point two million dollars. Property taxes were reduced for the coming year on single-family residence structures and associated land on the first one million dollars of assessed value by twenty-five percent. And just under twenty-five hundred applicants qualified as long-term homeowners and received a fifty percent reduction in their tax, property tax for the coming year. Many organizations requesting special funding were reduced by twenty-five percent or eliminated altogether from the budget. As an emphasized point of clarification from what has been reported in a news article, the county's self-funded health insurance premiums will increase by six point two five percent or approximately a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars rather than the six hundred thousand previously reported. The county provides funding to four separate boards, including the fair advisory board, the library board, the museum board, and the Parks and Rec board. Park County Commissioners appoint members to all four boards who oversee their respective budgets, operating budgets. These boards are, have been allocated as follows. Parks and Rec, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, down from one seventy-nine last year. Park County Museum Board, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Park County Fair Advisory Board will receive zero dollars in this budget as they will be using a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar cash carryover from the previous fiscal year. The Park County Library Board received one point eight million for a total of two million three hundred and twenty-nine thousand for all the boards. Payment in lieu of taxes or pilt is provided to counties with federal land and continues to be a last-minute funding source as it comes from Congress annually and may or may not be approved in the future. The pilt payment for fiscal Twenty-Sixth is approximately two point eight million dollars. Park County Commissioners approved a twenty-five percent cost-of-living adjustment to all employees along with a two-step increase to use at the discretion of the department heads and elected officials. Infrastructure and facility maintenance continues to be a focus in the county. The courthouse HVAC project has been completed, and now an upgrade to the HVAC system in the law enforcement center is scheduled to begin in fiscal year Twenty-Sixth. The Park County landfill has completed the construction of a new solid waste cell that should provide twenty years of useful life at a cost of around two point one million dollars. The county has operated a septic receiving facility that takes bulk septic from county haulers, which is going to be decommissioned after a new facility is built at the city of Cody's septic receiving area. The county, in conjunction with the city, has committed two million dollars of ARPA funds as well as a two million dollar state grant to the new septic project. The balance of solid waste enterprise fund as of the end of fiscal year Twenty-four Twenty-Five is fifty-eight thousand dollars, with revenues for fiscal year Twenty-Sixth projected to be approximately four point nine million, and expenses are expected to total four and a half million dollars. The Park County Road and Bridge System is comprised of more than six hundred and thirty miles of road and sixty-nine bridges. The Park County Public Works Department, which includes engineering, solid waste, and road and bridge divisions, is responsible for improving and maintaining the county's vast and diverse system of roads and bridges. Funding from state, from the state, includes the county road construction fund, while federal dollars come from such programs as the Federal Lands Access Program that is being used to improve the Upper South Fork Road. State funds have been, have provided for dust mitigation on various gravel roads and bridge replacement on the Lower Grable River Road. The county expects expenditures for road and bridge to be about seven point three million, down from approximately two point one million over fiscal Twenty-five. In conclusion, Madam Chairman, we feel the budget herein presented this evening is a true reflection of the goals and financial policies established by this board for the fiscal year Twenty-five Twenty-Sixth and reflects the goals and financial policies established by the Park County Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing for public comment on the proposed budget. There's someone that would like to come forward and speak?
You want my name? Heidi Rasmussen. Anything else? Member of the public.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to first thank you for all of the work that went into this budget. I sat here with all of you for a day and a half, working through every department and saw the diligence that you put into it, and I don't think a lot of members of the public see that as long, along with your meeting the other week on the first of July as well. I don't know what needs to happen, but I think that some education needs to take place, and I don't know how we facilitate that as a community. But I think that when we see, I want to pay lower tax.
Thank you, Kelly. Good evening. Nice to welcome everybody here for a special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. This meeting is to have a public hearing regarding our budget, but first if you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Randall?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where which stands, my nation under the umbrella indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before I open the public hearing, there's just a couple rules we'd like to go over. Of course, the meeting is open to the public. Members of the public in attendance will be invited to speak one at a time. Chairman may impose a time limit for individuals to comment. That is normally two minutes. Each speaker shall state his or her name and affiliation prior to commencing, and we are going to ask you to come up to the microphone so that the county clerk can hear you clearly as she will the fifteen minutes of the hearing. Those in attendance shall conduct themselves respectfully and avoid interruptions. No outburst hearing or applause. The board is not obligated to respond to comments during the public hearing, and minutes of the meeting will be recorded by the clerk. So with that said, I'd like to have the Park County Clerk's budget message put into the record, please.
Madam Chairman, thank you. My name is Hans Odie. I'm the second deputy. No, I'm the first deputy. That's what I I just demoted myself, I guess. Not on purpose. So I'm the first deputy Park County Clerk. Madam Chairman, Park County Board of Commissioners, we are pleased to present the Park County Fiscal Year 26 Budget pursuant to Wyoming State Statute 164109. The budget is comprised of suggestions and requests of elected officials, department heads, boards, organizations, and the public. It is a combined effort with the Board of County Commissioners, staff from the Clerk's Office and the Treasurer's Office. We would like to thank all those involved for all their help during this budget session. It's the Commissioner's job to ensure that expenditures do not exceed revenue projections. Included in today's budget being presented here, our goals and highlights for the 26 include the following. The general fund revenue projection for the coming year is $34.4 million. General fund budget request for fiscal year 25, total $37.6 million, which includes special operations such as solid waste, county road construction fund, American recovery funds, opioid settlement, and E911. Park County has $14.7 million in general fund reserves, $621,000 in mineral property tax revenues, plus the healthcare fund, the county road fund, solid waste, and E911 reserve account funds. The county will use a net $5.2 million cash carryover to balance the fiscal year for fiscal year 26. That cash carryover comes from the fiscal year 25 budget. The county's overall tax revenue from the assessed valuation decreased from $12.9 million for fiscal '25 to $10.2 million for fiscal '26, a decrease of almost $2.2 million. Property taxes were reduced for the coming year on single-family resident structures and associated land on the first $1 million of assessed value by 25%. And just under 2,500 applicants qualified as long-term homeowners and received a 50% reduction in their tax, property tax for the coming year. Many organizations requesting special funding were reduced by 25% or eliminated altogether from the budget. As an emphasized point of clarification from what has been reported in a news article, the county's self-funded health insurance premiums will increase by 6.25% or approximately $173,000 rather than the $600,000 previously recorded. The county provides funding to four separate boards, including the fair advisory board, the library board, the museum board, and the Parks and Rec board. Park County Commissioners appoint members to all four boards who oversee their respective budgets, operating budgets. These boards are, have been allocated as follows. Parks and Rec, $133,000, down from $179 last year. Park County Museum Board, $327,000. Park County Fair Advisory Board will receive $0 in this budget, as they will be using $126,000 cash carryover from the previous fiscal year. The Park County Library Board received $1.8 million for a total of $2,329,000 for all the boards. Payment in lieu of taxes, or PILT, is provided to counties with federal land and continues to be a last-minute funding source as it comes from Congress annually, and may or may not be approved in the future. The PILT payment for fiscal '26 is approximately $2.8 million. Park County Commissioners approved a 25% cost-of-living adjustment to all employees, along with a two-step increase to use at the discretion of the department heads and elected officials. Infrastructure and facility maintenance continues to be a focus in the county. Courthouse HVAC project has been completed, and now an upgrade to the HVAC system in the law enforcement center is scheduled to begin in fiscal year '26. The Park County landfill has completed the construction of a new solid waste cell that should provide 20 years of useful life at a cost of around $2.1 million. The county has operated a septic receiving facility that takes bulk septic from county haulers, which is going to be decommissioned after a new facility is built at the city of Cody, Septic Receiving Area. The county, in conjunction with the city, has committed $2 million of ARPA funds, as well as a $2 million state grant to the new septic project. The balance of solid waste enterprise fund as of the end of fiscal year '24-25 is $58,000, with revenues for fiscal year '26 projected to be approximately $4.9 million, and expenses are expected to total $4.5 million. The Park County Road and Bridge System is comprised of more than 630 miles of road and 69 bridges. The Park County Public Works Department, which includes engineering, solid waste, and road and bridge divisions, is responsible for improving and maintaining the county's vast and diverse system of roads and bridges. Funding from the state includes the county road construction fund, while federal dollars come from such programs as the Federal Lands Access Program that is being used to improve the Upper South Fork Road. State funds have been, have provided for dust mitigation on various gravel roads and bridge replacement on the Lower Grable River Road. The county expects expenditures for road and bridge to be about $7.3 million, down from approximately, down approximately $2.1 million over fiscal '25. In conclusion, Madam Chairman, we feel the budget herein presented this evening is a true reflection of the goals and financial policies established by this board for the fiscal year '25-26, and reflects the goals and financial policies established by the Park County Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing for public comment on the proposed budget. There's someone that would like to come forward and speak?
You want my name? Heidi Rasmussen. Anything else? Member of the public.
Thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to first thank you for all of the work that went into this budget. I sat here with all of you for a day and a half, working through every department and saw the diligence that you put into it, and I don't think a lot of members of the public see that, as long with your meeting the other week on the 1st of July as well. I don't know what needs to happen, but I think that some education needs to take place, and I don't know how we facilitate that as a community. But I think that when we see I want to pay lower tax or decrease my property tax on the ballot, it looks like a great idea until you come to these budget meetings, both here and I was sat through the city of Cody budget meetings, and we see services being cut. My new neighbors moved here from Oregon across the road, and they continually comment on the level of service that we in this community receive. And I think those of us who have lived here our whole lives don't understand how it can be in the rest of the world when money gets tight. Police respond when you call them about somebody running into your fence here. We don't have potholes in our roads. And if we continue to reduce revenue coming to our local governments, we, some of those services are going to have to get cut in the nature of balancing the budget, so. If somebody has a great idea, I'm willing to help with the education piece of it. I have no desire to sit where you're sitting, but I do thank you for your service and thank you for your work on the budget.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Sorry, dropped my pen.
No problem.
Jessica Goodwin, First Deputy Clerk to the Clerk of District Court's Office. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Clerk of District Court, Deborah Carroll, to ask for an approval for an amendment to our budget. I apologize about the lateness of this. This amendment would be the promotion of one of our employees to second deputy, so she would be my backup. This employee has consistently stepped up whenever and wherever was needed, which has been very helpful to our office. It will continue to be a great help in the future, as well as during times that either Mrs. Carroll, myself, or in the rare times that we are both out of the office. We also believe it will show recognition for all the hard work this employee has put into this job. What will this add to our budget is as follows. Please understand that these are older numbers given to us before the discussion of the COLA raises. I've been working with Bobby on getting more accurate numbers. The wages will increase by $3,958, which makes the wages total for our department $215,751. Social Security will increase by $275, which will make the Social Security total to $23,706. Retirement will increase by $652, which will make the retirement total $56,061. Workers' comp, health insurance, and life insurance will not increase. This is the approximately total increase amount requested is $4,885. I'm hoping to get those more accurate numbers tomorrow morning if this is something that you guys would like to further discuss. We understand that the county's budget is right now under discussion, and the reasons why are completely understandable. It is Ms. Carroll's hope and mine that you grant this, as we have been working very hard to mitigate costs and making cuts in every possible way to our budget so far in order to accommodate this. Thank you so much for giving me the time to bring this before you. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions for the Commissioners?
No. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak regarding the budget? Anyone else that would like to speak regarding the proposed budget? For the third time, anyone else that would like to speak regarding this proposed budget?
Madam Chair, I move we close public hearing.
Second. Been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Same sign. Thank you. Public hearing is closed. So Commissioners, we have one proposal before us. We do have this on our agenda tomorrow morning. We moved one way or the other with this budget, so that will be our discussion time on the agenda tomorrow morning. Okay? All right. I thank you all for coming, and I thank you for your interest in the county budget. We know that things are a little tighter this year, not a position we've been in for a while, and they're probably going to get tighter, so we're going to have to keep looking at these things. But appreciate you being here and appreciate your concern. Thank you. With that.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you.
Seconds.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? We are adjourned. Thank you.